To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Agenda approval, is there a motion to approve the agenda approval for public hearing and board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Tinsley and Mrs. Lowry, any discussion? Would you please call the role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
We'll come back.
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tansley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next one is fiscal year 25, 26, school board budget public hearing, Dr. Day.
Yes. I want to first of all explain, we've got several public hearings coming up. We have two this evening. This public hearing, which we're about to begin, is the legally required public hearing for comments on the LCS school budget for fiscal year 2026. If you have any non-budget related comments, you can save those for the general public comment period, which will come a little bit later in this evening's agenda. And then a week from tonight, there will be another public hearing session dealing specifically with the proposal that we're going to hear from the Facilities and Finance Committee at tonight's meeting as well. This public comment period, which we're about to begin, is specifically for comments pertaining to the budget. Okay? Now, on the sign-up sheet, I have only one name listed, Mrs. Carleen Larkins. And as a representative of a group, she has five minutes.
Hello, school board. Here we are again, another budget season. I know how frustrating the budget seasons are. I have to say, before I got involved with Save Our Schools, I had no idea how frustrating the budget seasons were. My kids went to school, they came home from school, and that was all that I knew. But as you guys know, we've been advocating for the last 18 months to get more budget. It saddens my heart that we're talking about not getting the $5.5 million needed for the operating budget for next year. We will continue to fight for that. I thank those of you who spoke up during the joint meeting and really spoke out for our public education system. Dr. Copeland, I agree wholeheartedly that if we do not get the funds we need for our schools, that our city will be harmed. I know there are many things that are outside of our control, that are outside of your control when it comes to budget. But there are few things that are inside your control. One of them is communication. I was thinking about this the other day as I was driving both of my children to high school and middle school at the same time, much to my middle schooler's sugarin'. Last year, you guys changed the time school starts. It's inconvenient, don't love it. But the communication with that was great. We were asked for input, we were communicated with that it could happen, and then when it happened, we were given a video. Frequently asked questions were already there. I could find out that my middle schooler's not going to sit with a senior in high school. I got to know that the reason we did this is because we had to save funds and that we had to be able to get kids to school consistently. It's inconvenient, I don't love it, but the communication was there. And as far as I'm aware, you didn't see a whole bunch of parents showing up here being upset about it because they understood the why. As you move into this budget season, I know you have to make really hard decisions. Decisions that are going to affect a lot of families, which leads me to my next point. While you're looking at the dollars and cents, do not forget your mission. Every child by name and by need through graduation. As you look at possibly rezoning kids, are there fifth graders that have been there K through 5 and you're going to switch them the last year? Are you looking at them individually? Are you looking at the families who might be impacted by going to BASS? That's a big change for a family, going from a normal to a, you know, year-round situation. Are you looking at every child, not as how much they cost the system, but for who they are? The children who thrive with innovation at TC Miller, if you make that decision to close, will they get to thrive somewhere else with musicals? Will they get to have a drum line like RS Payne does? Will they get to find a place where they come alive? You have incredibly difficult decisions to make. I don't envy your position at all, but I do ask that as you look at dollars and cents, you don't forget what they're connected to. You don't forget who they're connected to, and that you don't do it in the dark. That you do it in the light of day, because when parents understand, when the community understands what you're doing, it's so much easier to get behind you. But feeling like we're always waiting for the other shoe to drop, that causes distrust. And it doesn't ultimately, at the end, serve the very people, I believe you came here to serve, the very people I continue to advocate for, the children of our city.
Thank you. Are there any other people here who did not sign up to talk about budget-related issues this evening? If not, we will...
Any emails?
Are there any emails?
No, sir.
Or voicemails?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Would you please call role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tansley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is chair comments. I was not going to say anything, but I'm going to make one statement. This school district runs on fuel, and the fuel is money. Eighty-five percent of our cost is human resource. And we have to give money raises to our teachers and staff because they are just like us. They go to normal grocery stores and price of everything has gone up. Our minimum wage for Lynchburg City School employees is $15. For the last three years, Mr. Andrews, you are the witness, we have been bringing up that goal of $17, but we were not able to do that because the money supply...
And the goal...
Yes, sir, the money supply is not coming from across the street. We were trying to make our teachers minimum $50,000. That has not happened because we didn't have the money. It doesn't mean the school board doesn't want to do it, but our hands are tied. We don't have the purse in our hand. But we are committed to providing a quality learning environment. That's what we are all about. We tightened up the policies, discipline policies, last year, and now we are in process of enforcing them to make sure they are enforced through, I'm looking at the chair of the discipline committee, Mr. Connors, to make sure the enforcement is there. And we are able to provide a safe learning environment for students as well as a teaching environment for teachers. That's all I needed to say.
Did you want to just say?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. You wanted to say some parliamentary procedure, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I was asked to make some comments specifically for the chairs of our various committees. Please respect the distinction between members and non-members or guests at your meetings. Only appointed members and your parent liaisons may vote. And if you're meeting in this room, only actual members, designated liaisons, and relevant LCS staff should be seated here at the dais. All others, including board members who are not committee members, should be seated in the chairs for the public and should not interrupt the committee meetings. They should be allowed to speak only at the invitation of the committee chair. If you are meeting in Room 206 upstairs, of course, there's no separate dais, but you should still maintain the distinction between legitimate members and staff and those who are only there to observe.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one is presentation of plaque of commemoration of 160 years of public education. Back to you, Dr. Day and Dr. Copeland, are you doing it, either one of you?
Well, I believe Dr. Potter is here to make this presentation, so please.
Correct. You want to say something?
I'm leaving it up to Dr. Potter.
We've known Dr. Potter for years, we were colleagues.
I have a handout for you. I come to make you a gift. This September will mark the 160th anniversary of the public school system in Lynchburg. Now, the state of Virginia did not approve public education until 1870. We had public schools in Lynchburg five years before the rest of the state. Thanks to General Curtis, who was the commander of the Lynchburg District, and the Sons of Union Veterans, of which I'm a member, would like to donate to the LCS a plaque commemorating that moment in time when we established our first public schools. And that's why I'm here tonight. It's not going to cost you a penny, it's a gift. And by the way, I might mention that the first teachers were not paid by the city because they were Union soldiers and the government paid their salaries. They had been teachers before the war began, and they were put back in the classroom by General Curtis. Any questions you'd like to ask?
Is this the appearance of the plaque?
That's the wording for the plaque, yeah. And that lists the first superintendent and the first members of the first school board.
Very nice.
By the way, I'm a product of the LCS.
Thank you.
I entered school here 80 years ago this September. And the Education Act obtained in Lynchburg carried me all the way to Oxford University. So somebody's doing something right.
Questions?
Any questions?
How does the Sons of the Veterans operate in town? What do they do?
We, it's a fraternal organization made up of descendants of Union soldiers. I'm a descendant of two Union officers. And we have spent almost the last 20 years erecting monuments, marking graves. And I just published a book on the POW camp that was here in Lynchburg for Union soldiers. So we're a fraternal organization that dates back to the period immediately after the war.
Dr. Potter, where was that prisoner-of-war camp located?
Where EC Glass is located. I mentioned that too, that one of the former principals, that it was the closest thing I'd ever come to being a prisoner-of-war when I spent... And she also was a graduate, she said I feel the same way.
I wonder how recrudent students feel.
Thank you, Dr. Potter.
Thank you very much.
You need a round of applause.
I will tell Mr. Bayer, who's also an EC Glass graduate, to go ahead and order the plaque.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Potter.
Next one is Excellence in Science Scholarship, Dr. Copeland.
I'll call Dawn Wise to the podium for the introduction and description of the momentous day.
Chairperson Gupta, vice chair Day, and school board members, good evening. My name is Dawn Wise, and I'm the executive director of the Lynchburg City Schools Education Foundation. And I am so excited to be here to announce the 2025 Lynchburg City Schools Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient. To share a little history about the Excellence in Science Scholarship, in the fall of 2013, Dr. Charles Pryor and his family announced their initial funding of a scholarship to be awarded to an outstanding senior interested in entering an engineering-related field to study. And 12 years later, this scholarship continues today and has been expanded to include the broader science fields and lives at the LCS Education Foundation as its fiscal agent. I would first like to speak a little bit about Charlie and why this scholarship is so important to him and to this division. Dr. Pryor is a graduate of Virginia Tech and EC Glass High School. He earned his bachelor degree in civil engineering in 1966. And by 1968, he had his masters, and two years later, his doctorate in structural engineering. After finishing his education, he served as president and CEO of Westinghouse Energy Systems and Westinghouse Electric Company, president and CEO of British Nuclear Fuels Utilities Business Group, president and CEO of BMW Nuclear Technologies, and chairman of the BMW Nuclear Fuel Company. Additionally, Charlie has a long history of valuing and supporting public education. And while at Lynchburg, has served as a member of the Lynchburg City School Board and past chairman of the Partners in Education Program. At this time, and he's way back there, I would like to invite Charlie Pryor to offer some remarks about his vision for and the importance of this scholarship.
Thank you. Dawn, and the school board members, thank you very much for the awesome responsibility you take on. I don't know of any more important task than the education of the youth of our community, frankly. I'm just blessed to have been surrounded by the Partners in Education Program and before Dawn, Jody Gillette, and now Dawn. And I guess this is our 13th award winner. And when I had lunch with Charlie White and Scott Braybrand years ago, we at Westinghouse sponsored something called a science scholarship nationally. And we gave a million dollars to that scholarship. And I just had the idea, I said, we didn't make Lynchburg City Schools unique. If we had such a science scholarship program here, couldn't swing the million-dollar level, but at least get it started. And Scott was very enthusiastic about it, and we got it started. And I'm just so pleased and proud of the program and all of the 13 winners of that award. They have gone on into walks of life where they've excelled and been leaders. Our first winner turned out to be the valedictorian at NC State. Not just engineering, the entire school, that was Sam Fedler. He was our first winner of that. So that's the caliber of kids that are applying and winning. And I'm told that this year, the applications included the two number-one students at Heritage and Glass. So I'm really thrilled that there's an interest, that kind of interest in the program, and it's kept going. So I thank you for your hard work here, and thank you for supporting this program.
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Thank you, Charlie. Charlie has always had a hope that the winner of this scholarship would go on to do great things in science or engineering, but ultimately would bring those talents back to Lynchburg, helping to continue to make our town a leader in science and engineering-related industries. And much of the reason our community is at the forefront of the science and engineering field is thanks to our other longstanding sponsor of this scholarship, BWX Technologies, who has been the lead sponsor for the past six years and who shares and embraces Charlie's vision for our city, our students, and our workforce. And I would like to invite Nat Marshall, BWXT's community relations manager, to offer a few remarks.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to come and say a few words. It's one of those things where with Charlie, with all those accolades and all that, it was sort of like Charlie Pryor and the other guy, not the other guy. So BWXT, you know, when Charlie asked, I don't know if we had a real choice of not supporting this, but as you may, those who have been affiliated and know the community and all the things that are going on, BWXT has doubled and tripled its opportunity and chance to really get out into the community and do things. So I've had the opportunity to sit with a number of you on Partners in Ed. Many folks will see us at many, if not most, of the career fairs. We are simply out here trying to make sure that our young people have the opportunity to do the very best that they can. And we know that the city will provide that opportunity. There's something called, and I've sat in several meetings with the superintendent in regards to a program called Lynchburg Area Youth Voice Initiative. So there's so many things that we can do, and certainly BWXT wants to be a part of it. So here we are, and appreciate the opportunity to speak for a moment. And we look forward to our young people doing great things in our community and the world. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've had the privilege working with Nat and BWXT for over 10 years in other capacities. And I've been able to witness firsthand the incredible commitment to our city's students and youth that this company demonstrates every day through their core values of people, innovation, responsibility, and the fitting fourth pillar of excellence. Thank you again to Nat and BWXT. And our recipient this year was also an intern at BWXT with their environmental engineers, which is kind of cool. So now on to our recipient. A little bit about the requirements for this scholarship. It is awarded to the top senior science student as determined by a comprehensive application process to someone with outstanding grades in science and engineering-related courses who demonstrates a deep passion for science or engineering, who has created and mastered available science and engineering opportunities, and who has a strong science or engineering vision for their future. This process requires a written application, a letter of interest, three letters of recommendation, an official transcript, and three essays to help gain greater applicant insight. From this scoring process, the top finalists are determined and complete a 30-minute in-person interview with the scholarship selection committee where they're asked to establish set of questions. established set of questions. So who best meets the profile of an Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient? This year's recipient is an outstanding graduating senior from EC Glass who also attends Central Virginia Governor's School. In addition to their impressive academic achievements, also participates in a broad range of extracurricular activities, including my favorite, being a Girl Scout ambassador, who are defined as innovative thinkers and optimists and have the ability to bring people together. Most notably, in 2024, they were the grand award International Science Fair finalist at the highly competitive Virginia State and Engineering Fair and were just one of two students selected to represent Central Virginia at the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Engineering Fair in Los Angeles. But there were two things that set our finalists apart from the rest. One was their essay. "The True Desire to Help Change the World Echoed Throughout." And I quote, "Environmental conservation is an issue I care deeply about, and I am enthusiastic about finding solutions to environmental problems. I've been captivated by the environment for as long as I can remember because nature has always felt like home. Times spent outside, splashing the water or trekking mountains with my family nurtured a deep appreciation and curiosity for the natural world. In fact, one of the strongest attributes my parents instilled in me was curiosity. And as I learned more about the amazing world, I also learned about all the negatives. As a very empathetic, yet strongly opinionated child, I didn't understand why people do things that know they hurt the earth or other people." The other thing that sets this recipient apart was their interview, particularly the question where we asked what their education academic future goals are. And people can talk about college and beyond if they want to go backpacking or whatever. So they're asked to talk about college, but even go beyond that. They immediately burst into an excited smile as they rapid-fire spoke about their plan to first complete their studies in environmental science at George Mason University, then to join the U.S. Coast Guard as an officer and a scientist in the response sector focusing on humanitarian and environmental crises. And then, after fulfilling a five-year service commitment, they plan to pursue a master's degree in the environmental field. And after a career and a role focused on watershed protection and environmental management, would like to eventually return to school for their doctorate, preferably focusing on environmental and watershed sustainability. That's a lot. Of course, all the finalists had similar incredible goals and plans. But the moment we knew this was our winner was when, after all of this had spilled out and they let out a big contented sigh, shrugged, and like a true scientist stated, "Of course, I know all of those plans may change and I am determined to adapt." This year's recipient embodies the very essence of what this scholarship was designed to honor. It is indeed my privilege to announce the 2025 Lynchburg City Schools Excellence in Science Scholarship recipient, Lindley Eleanor Crosby.
Congratulations. So you have to suffer here for just a few minutes. You continue now, a member of a long line of Excellence in Science Award winners. Okay, I'll offer you a piece of advice. Don't give up on that Coast Guard career because they have this thing called the Naval Postgraduate School and you might be able to get your environmental science master's degree and/or doctorate courtesy of the U.S. military. I went to the Naval Postgraduate School and have a master's degree from there. So don't give up on it. There's opportunities there. But congratulations. This is an amazing award. You'll go do great things. Y'all get the first picture. Did you get one of me already?
Yes.
All right, I'm good. Congratulations. Is there anything you'd like to say to the board?
I'm going to keep it short, but I just wanted to say it's such an honor to receive this scholarship. I want to thank the Pryor family and BWXT, as well as all of my teachers, for allowing me and other students to go above and beyond in the field of science. Thank you.
The board wants to get a picture with you.
If you don't mind.
So they really put you in the center of the room for this?
Go on, Dr. Copeland.
Middle of the horseshoe.
Dr. Smith, you have a time to come, sir. Please do.
I'm just here to piece a picture. I'm good. This is the board's picture. Dr. Gupta, can you come? I can't see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Yes, that's very nice.
Next one is student representative. Dr. Copeland, student representative, comments.
Good evening, everyone. We'll start with Ms. White at EC Glass this week.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're finally getting into April. Spring break is coming up soon. But I just wanted to give an update on our EC Glass EC Glass spring teams and their most recent performances. Boys' and girls' outdoor track is competing, I believe, yeah, it's tonight at Rustberg High School, so best of luck to all our athletes. Varsity baseball currently holds a four-and-one record and JV baseball stands at two-and-two. Boys' tennis is going to face Liberty Christian Academy this Thursday, April third, while girls' tennis is going to also play against LCA but at home on the same day. Boys' soccer is off to a really strong start with a two-and-oh record. Boys' JV soccer holds a record of one and one and oh. And girls' varsity soccer is currently undefeated with a three-and-oh record. Boys' varsity lacrosse stands at one and one and their JV team has a game upcoming on April tenth against William Byrd. And girls' varsity lacrosse is also undefeated with a two-and-oh record. So great job to the Lady Hill Toppers and everyone else for their hard work and dedication. So I'm excited to see how the rest of the season goes for everyone. I'm excited to share an update about this year's senior art show at Glass. The open call for submissions is now open, which invites all senior artists to submit one to three pieces for consideration. And the special highlight is going to be hosted at the Academy Center of the Arts. The guidelines only current EC Glass seniors can submit. Two-D and three-D pieces are going to be accepted and the work is not limited to what's created within EC Glass, so students can submit independent pieces as well. We also, in more art news, we'd like to take a moment to recognize ten outstanding EC Glass art students who have been selected for the annual LCS Youth Art Show at the Academy Center of the Arts. This is an amazing achievement and their artwork has been on display. Well, I guess not anymore. It was till the end of March. So but if any of you were able to see it, I'm sure you all loved it. I'm sorry it's not up anymore. But congratulations to Anna Yee, Carson Khan, Ella Stowers, Emmanuel Watson, Maren Albert, Jasmine Ford, Rowena Phillips, Ren Cook, Juliette Dop, and Casper Dudley. And I told you I was going to have these pictures this month. And our seniors had a really fun time celebrating their journey towards graduation at FunQuest. And it was a really great opportunity for everybody to relax and have fun and just enjoy their time together as they kind of approached their exciting milestone for graduation. Dr. Rule even took a few laps around the roller skating rink, so that was a great sight to see. We got to play laser tag, play in the arcade. It was a really fun experience. We had a great time. And I know the pictures aren't up, but I can still. Okay. On March twenty-ninth, Student Council held a pep rally to kind of build up some school spirit as we're in the spring season. Our very own Najee Ford from the hip-hop program, he kind of did the soundtrack and DJed the whole event, which was a lot of fun. The marching band was also there doing some live music and that was a lot of fun. We had a surprise Flash Mob performance from the cast of Footloose. So we got to see a little sneak peek of that. That was so much fun. They were all really, really talented, great dancing. And it was a really well-organized event. Oh, there we go, pictures. You can see the cast of Footloose dancing in their hats. It was so much fun. And so I'm, thank you to everyone who participated and made this success. Great job to Student Council. The Crest Yearbook, I'm actually on the yearbook staff, so this means so much to me. But it's officially been submitted and it's ready for preorder. And this doesn't really apply to as many people here, but if you want to buy a yearbook, you can order it at yearbookordercenter.com and the school code is one zero four six four. And the cost is only sixty-five dollars, which may seem like a lot, but it's a lot cheaper than other schools around us. Some schools sell it for eighty. But we worked really hard on it and it's it's really fun and I'm very proud of it. We have some great achievements in forensics. They went to the VHSL Class Four State Championship. Amri Dop is officially the Class Four Oratory State Champion with a really incredible performance. Sophia Haupt is a three-time Class Four State Championship, and she actually did her poetry pieces for one of my classes and she's super, super talented. Lindley Crosby, who actually just won the award, and Harper Weeby, they earned third place in Humorous Duo. And I've heard that that one's amazing as well. And the team as a whole is officially the VHSL Class Four Speech Runner-Up, so congratulations to the forensics team. And a quick moment to recognize a super-talented student at EC Glass, Senior Isaac Harden, who earned a spot in the All-Virginia Honors Orchestra, placing thirteenth out of one-hundred-and-twenty-six violinists to audition. And this is a really great accomplishment because everyone at the everyone at the audition pool had already qualified for Senior Regional Orchestra, making it like best-in-the-state kind of competition. So we're so proud of him and yeah, can't wait to see what else he does with his music. And then congratulations to our Skills USA students for their outstanding performance at district competitions next week. And all of these students have been are qualified to advance to the State Leadership Conference in Roanoke on April fifth. So congratulations to Betsy Wood, Weston Dixon, Matthew Cowpey, and Colin Rena. And this is, we're excited to see what they do in Roanoke and good luck to them. And then, last but not least, our dental program recently attended the HSOA conference, providing them with a lot of really valuable opportunities to get hands-on experience and expand their knowledge in the field of oral health. They were able to talk with industry professionals, explore new advancements in dental care, and gain a lot of insight that's going to help them as they continue on with the dental path. And so big thank you for instructors and students for representing EC Glass so well at the event. And that's all I've got this month, so thank you so much.
Very nice.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Hester, what's going on at Heritage High School?
They've had a great month this month. Our pioneer harmonized choir, they went on a trip to Washington, D.C. this past weekend. It was a great opportunity for students like full of many activities such as touring and taking a choral master class at George Mason University, seeing Broadway shows, baseball game, and sightseeing to many popular monuments and museums. I really wish I could have gone on that trip. It seemed so cool and everybody was just worried about it when they came back to school. Spring sports. Our boys' varsity soccer team has a current record of one to two. Our girls' varsity has the same record at one to two. And our boys' varsity baseball team has a current record of zero to five, but they're working very hard, so I can't wait to watch their next game. Boys' tennis has a current record of singles, zero to two, and doubles, zero to two, I think. And girls' tennis has a current record of singles, six and oh, which they're, that's amazing, and doubles, zero to two. Athletic spotlights. The girls' track team were at the 2025 Adidas Track Nationals and were the national runner-up and All-Americans for the girls' four-by-fifty-five-meter shuttle hurdle relay. Congratulations to Eliana Bradner, Brianna Toon, Ayana Johnson, and Jayla Benjamin. They're just so incredible. I love watching them compete every single time. Scholarship spotlight. Congratulations to seniors Ayami Ward and Sierra Hester, who both won a second-place scholarship award from the Martin Luther King Jr. Lynchburg Community Council. Thank you to the MLKJLCC for your continued support for our students and great job once again, ladies. So here are some shout-outs to some amazing staff members. Ms. Wiss, our Theater Tech teacher, had the opportunity to speak about the importance of arts education during the morning breakfast with the superintendent on March the thirteenth. Mr. Drumheller won the Science Teaching Award this past week from Randolph College. And Mr. Sullivan, our athletic trainer, was spotlighted for his outstanding work with always ensuring athletes, my bad, stayed safe and performing at their best during many competitions this season. So thank you to all of them for their hard work. Our Heritage Drill Team. The Heritage Drill Team on March eighth won second place overall at the Henrico County Drill Meet at the school. And the individual armed knockout, Jamie Jardebro, took first place. Avery Pryor took second place. And for their personal inspection, they took home third place. They also took home second place for color guard and third place unarmed platoon. Congratulations to the team and great job. Mechatronics. This is awesome to see. I was able to see it this week, this past week. The CVCC mechatronics team provided a hands-on learning experience for students during Future Friday last week. Students learned about the mechatronics program as well as other CTE programs, opportunities at CVCC while exploring VEX robotics, circuits, and electricity. Thank you so much for, to the CVCC team for making this opportunity so much fun. It was awesome to see like the robots and stuff move around the school. It was just so cool. Thank you. A huge shout-out to Mr. Clemmons, our amazing LCS social worker. Mr. Clemmons won the BA School Social Worker of the Year. Thank you for how you have taken such great care of your students. Thank you and have a great day in number one big orange country.
Thank you both.
Next one is public comments, Dr. D.
Thank you. So this is now our general public comment period. We only have one speaker signed up, so I don't know that I need to read the full policy statement. I'll just remind you that individuals have three minutes to speak, but if you represent a group and explain that to us at the beginning, then you can have five minutes. The one speaker who signed up is April Watson.
Good evening. My name's April Watson. I'm a Lynchburg City Schools parent. I have two kids that are currently enrolled in Lynchburg City Schools, middle-schooler and a high-schooler. No, elementary and middle school, not there yet. I'm here tonight to address a concern specifically in reference to School Board Policy, KF Distribution of Information and Materials. You'll recall that earlier this year, we celebrated Constitution Day on September seventeenth, 2024. There's a lovely post on social media of kids smiling with their constitutions and activities that they did all day long. Later that week, a few days later, I saw my child's constitution in his binder, picked it up to look through it, to ask him about it, to talk to him about it. And I noticed that it's, takes me, there's a QR code on the back that takes me directly to a website, www.nineseventeensociety.org. And the more I looked on that website, there were, there was information about fundraisers for political candidates such as Mark Robinson for Lieutenant, excuse me, for North Carolina Lieutenant Governor, Agayla Mar-a-Lago Club, and other politically motivated, other politically motivated information and even more. Section KF of the School Board Policy states, "Materials from nonprofit community organizations approved for distribution must clearly indicate their source and must include the following statement. These materials and the activity described herein are not sponsored or endorsed by the Lynchburg City School Board. That disclaimer was not printed on the constitutions distributed to many of our elementary and middle school students. The Nine Seventeen Society has ties to Moms for Liberty, which is identified as a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center. Other school districts across the country have voted not to accept these specific constitutions." And I don't think most parents would have an issue with a basic constitution. I know I certainly wouldn't. However, this this school board accepted this donation and it doesn't appear that there was any, potentially any vetting. The following month, October, my elementary school student brought home a packet of materials from the Lynchburg Fire Department, super-appropriate fire safety material. The disclaimer was present on every item in the packet. December, I was working with another elementary school to prepare for a fundraiser. We received a donation of approximately five hundred books. However, we could not use those books for the fundraiser because there wasn't enough time or manpower to have each individual book reviewed prior to the fundraiser beginning. This past March, you all, I'm sure, heard about the amazing local Read-A-Thon that many of our schools participated in. One specific elementary school received an amazing donation. Every single one of the students in that school was going to get Space Chasers, a book written by our local amazing astronaut, Leland Melvin. And there was a little bit of, there was a pause period because obviously that book had to be reviewed before those could be given. had to be reviewed, um, before those could be given out. And then ultimately, I believe that did happen. But I just, I want to leave you all with a story about a young person from our community. Teen pregnancy was common in her family, so much so that it was her goal to be the first person to graduate in her family without being pregnant or a teen, or a teen parent. She didn't have a safe, reliable person to talk to or to learn from. Her only option was to go to her local library and to, to learn how to get pregnant or how not to get pregnant, but that's something that she had access to. When we put restrictions on books and limit what people have access to, sometimes we cut off the very information that may keep them from moving forward. And I only say that to say, um, I think when we do have things, I think obviously there are processes that are, that are happening or not happening. Please just do your diligence and don't make it harder to access information.
Thank you. Are there any individuals who also wanted to make public comments who did not sign up? Yes? Okay, on the left here first.
Sorry for my hobble. Um, my name's Letizia Rodriguez. I am a Lynchburg City School parent and have addressed the board in the past. Um, I am a transplant from the state of Florida to Lynchburg. I sent an email on March the 19th after hearing about the potential closure again of TC Miller to Dr. Copeland. Um, I'd like to read the email if that's okay, Dr. Copeland. Thank you. Dear Dr. Copeland, I am reaching out to you today because it came as a shock to me to read the news this morning and find that there was a proposal once again to close down TC Miller as an elementary school. I moved here in July of 2024 and sought after TC Miller specifically for my child. My child can academically perform better when she is in a performing arts school. After extensive research of the surrounding schools and the schools within her zone, I chose to apply, like many others, to TC Miller for its offerings. I applied while out of state to secure her spot because we knew the school would be the best for her. To constantly hear that the school is looking to be closed makes me feel like our move was in vain and I should leave the Lynchburg area. I am sure that there are many other parents within the school that can understand this pain, I'm sorry, feel this pain. The uncertainty of what this school is facing not only jeopardizes the academic performance of those students, but the relationships and bonds that they have made during their time here. It impacts the tenure of the teachers that have decided and/or chose to work at TC Miller and the hard work of the staff and principal that has been put into the school trying to keep it alive. I'm not sure if you are aware, but Lynchburg does not offer many options when it comes to Enchamout Elementary School grade facilities. Walking the halls of the school as a parent, walking the halls of the school as an educator, and walking the halls of the school as just a neighbor will make you understand why keeping schools like this and this around and very much necessary. It is not all about testing growth. It is more than just a grade. Having an option for violin classes, performing arts, stage options, and other extracurricular activities for students helps to open their mind of the possibility of what their future can hold. If this is all for the sake of budgeting and not in the best interest of the students who will receive the greatest impact, I beseech you and the board to take a more human look at other options available or to attend the schools yourself. I'd like to add briefly that the school is a three-floor school and to look at it for pre-K students going up and down the stairs, I'm not sure that that is viable for three and four-year-olds. The other thing is if I wanted to apply for my child to go to the other innovation school, this announcement came after the deadline, so I don't have many options. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, was there someone else?
Hello. My name is Maisha Miller and I have the privilege of being both a staff member and a parent at TC Miller. I was heartbroken when I learned this school might close. When my children and I relocated from North Carolina, I faced the same question every parent does. Where would my kids be safe, supported, and inspired? I prayed about it, did my research, and asked around town. Every sign pointed to TC Miller. When we toured the school, we all felt it. This was home. The atmosphere was so inviting. I will never forget how Ms. Kamona greeted us with her warm, kind spirit. It made us feel like we belonged from the very start. Ms. Pan's bright cheeky energy reminded us of home and it was clear TC Miller had a unique vibe. Mrs. Rhodes, always mission-driven, showed her deep commitment to making a difference in students' lives. She, she knows her kids and it's evident how much she loves them. The way she engaged my children from day one was unlike any principal I've known. She didn't just offer a formal greeting, she genuinely wanted to understand who they were. It felt as though she was not only determining if they would be a good fit with the school, but also ensuring the school was the right fit for them. Right then, I knew that if she didn't consider me for the position, I'd do whatever it took to make sure that my kids were able to call TC Miller home. And they felt the same way. This is why I am fighting the move to close the school. My son, Jaden, had never had a school to call home. He went to school, he just did not consider it a place where he wanted to learn. He didn't like, he didn't just dislike school, he loved it. He cried, pretended to be sick many times. And I cried because I didn't know what else to do as a parent or how to help him. He felt inadequate and couldn't keep up. But now, he joined the library club. He begs me to get to school early every morning. Every evening, he says, "I can't wait for school tomorrow." Excited to share everything he's learning in class. My daughter, she's the same way. It was interesting learning about Maggie Walker and her penny bank. She's in first grade and she's telling me all historical facts when she comes home. And that shares a few students' story. There are 168 more who call TC, TC Miller home. We may be small, but we are not insignificant. We matter. TC Miller is more than just a school, it's a family. Our teachers don't just show up, they pour their hearts out into every lesson, every challenge, every setback, even the face of uncertainty and the looming threat of closure.
Yeah, thank you.
It isn't just where we work, but it's where our kids learn and it's where we belong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think there was one more person, please.
I wasn't planning to speak, so I'm really nervous. I don't have any notes or anything. I do have a question. Is it okay to say positive things about people by name?
Of course.
That's allowed? Do you need to check?
No, you can say, we cannot comment on any of these things.
I'm sorry?
We cannot respond.
The policy says, uh, you may not make comments about a public official or employee that are not related to the public official or employee's official duties. So if your comments are related to their-
All right. I got some stuff to tell you guys.
Please identify yourself.
Yeah, my name is Joan Louis Yoder. I'm a former LCS teacher at Deerington. Very proud of that school, loved it. Taught at Heritage High School for a couple of years, know some of you from there. Um, so I'm a former teacher and, uh, you know, I would love to talk you all, with you all about why that is. Um, but I want to tell you about some awesome things that happened at Deerington. Um, when we were talking about History Day, do you guys know that one of the Deerington teachers won a prize at History Day for being an outstanding history teacher? She has made sure that every one of her students has done a history project. This year, it wasn't all of them, but she's got like different groups going to states. They won first prize and that's Janet Bates. And you should know her name and hopefully you do. I think you all know Mr. Jambrone. He is amazing. He is fantastic. Now, if you think about what this woman just said about the experience that her sons had at TC Miller, that's powerful. That's life-changing and she told you who deserves credit for it. It's those teachers. Now, you can ask Ms. Rhodes, another incredible employee of LCS, longtime serving these students. You can ask her how many teachers she got to keep? What was the loss to LCS after the mess of last year in TC Miller? The loss of talented, dedicated staff? And as you consider the changes that you're going to make tonight and the impact they're going to have on other schools and why you first said, "We're going to close Deerington last year," and then took a look and saw how strong that school is? It's because of the leadership of people like Kelly Bivens, the people like Jason Jambrone, and those teachers there like Ms. Bates. It's their leadership. And you changed your minds about closing Deerington. But TC Miller also had amazing staff. And what did you do to make sure we retained them? Please look at your human resource numbers. Please look at the percentage of teachers you have who are not licensed right now. I did not get my license in a traditional manner. I have nothing against that. It is okay. You can be a great teacher and not go traditional route, but they need help.
Thank you.
Are there any voicemails or emails, Ms. Day? All right. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Day. Next is consent agenda, is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Yes, there anything in the consent agenda? Oh yeah, there is, sorry.
Dr. Tinsley, second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Dr. Day, would you please call the role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Janelle?
No.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries into motion.
Thank you. Next one is finance report, Dr. Copeland.
Turn it over to our CFO.
Good evening, Chairman Gupta, members of the board, and Dr. Copeland. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I will be briefing my remarks this evening because we have a big agenda and it's a beautiful evening. So hopefully we can get out soon and enjoy it. You have before you the February 28th, uh, 2025 month in financials. As of February, it marks 66.67% of the fiscal year passing. It is flying by, folks. Uh, the percent of revenues collected versus original appropriation is standing at 54.96% year-to-date. And the amount of expenditures versus original appropriation is 60.99% year-to-date. And the total expenditures inclusive of encumbrances, which may or may not be spent throughout the rest of the fiscal year, uh, equates to 93.88%. I am happy to report there are no new notable variances for the month. And we have whittled away the variances from prior months. I will note them, but they are, we only have three outstanding, um, variances from prior months that we have not, uh, that we are still processing through. Uh, one is the attendance and health services personnel. That line stands at 107.08. We are working at moving some expenditures and rightsizing where those positions belong. Um, and the second one is Function 4600, Security Services Other. They are just over the 100% mark at 100.66. Those are related to our very important, uh, security features like Raptor and Sonatrol and other, uh, expenses related to the, the safety of our students. And then the third one is Function 8100, which is Technology Classroom Instruction. They have significantly, um, used a, a good portion of the budget and they're resting at 223.52%. But those expenses are related to the software that we provide students in their learning capacity. So if we're going to overspend in any budget line, I would prefer that it be on our students and providing them with the tools that they need to learn. So, um, on our statement of revenue, our, uh, revenue collections, our state are coming in at 60.11%. Our federal are coming in at 29.95%. And our local took a jump and they are coming in at 45.81% respectively. We have, uh, on our miscellaneous, we have collected, um, 121.19% of what we had budgeted, go us. And our charges for service rest at 87.18% of what we had budgeted. So on our monthly, uh, report, our summary report for health insurance, at the time of this, um, report that I had to provide to you, our insurance, health insurance balances weren't completed for February. Those calculations will report, will be reported in subsequent reports. But I have a little information for you on, uh, the insurance route. I'll be attending a consortium, uh, insurance meeting for Regions Five, Six, and Seven on April 9th. The purpose of this meeting is to garner interest in developing a regional consortium uh, model or join an existing group. Roanoke County has agreed to host the meeting. So I will be coming back from that meeting and reporting, uh, what I have learned and what, uh, trajectory we potentially will take, uh, to the Facilities and Finance Committee. Um, so I will, at this time, entertain any questions that you have.
Question for Ms. James. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I like the idea of consortium. Dr. Ward, I remember we talked about a couple of years ago. So anything we can do to reduce the cost of healthcare?
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely.
Next one is 25, 26 budget discussion, Dr. Copeland and our Chair of Finance Committee, Mr. Connor.
So I'll start this off, let Mr. Connor fill in the gaps or Ms. James, uh, if I missed something. So, uh, it's just a quick update for everybody. We requested $5.5 million from the city. Uh, current budget numbers have $2.71 million, so roughly 50% of what we requested. Uh, the governor, uh, sent the budget, the appropriations bill, uh, back to the General Assembly, uh, about a week and a half ago. Uh, he had line item vetoed, uh, six or seven different components, but there were several hundred amendments contained within that, so it will take the General Assembly a little while to pick through some of that. The largest impact, um, was a change to what we call the support staff cap. Uh, so, uh, he basically decreased what the General Assembly said him by roughly two and a half positions. And that's funded at positions per thousand students. So the impact of that, uh, for us, uh, is seven times two and a half. And I didn't do the math ahead of time, uh, so I'll just leave it at that. Don't embarrass myself. So-
Seventeen.
Seventeen and a half. They have a short session which runs about two weeks, uh, so hopefully within the next three to four weeks, we will know, uh, pretty firmly where we stand with the state funding data. Uh, once that's, once General Assembly is done with it, of course, they send it back to the governor. I don't know if he has a delay timeframe in which he has to react, uh, on this cycle or not. Uh, but then they will update the, what they, what we call the CAUPT tool within the Department of Education for what the final numbers are going to be. So at the same time, City Council will start having, uh, their deliberations and discussions. The 22nd of April will be City Council's Budget Hearing. Uh, there will be three budget hearings that night. One's real estate tax, I forget what the sex, second one is. A real estate assessment, not the tax, real estate assessment. There's a second one. And then this, the, uh, comments on the overall budget will be the third public hearing, uh, to occur that evening. Uh, I plan to be there and have requested, uh, a few other folks be there to speak, uh, to the importance of fully funding the school division's needs. I think I got everything, Mr. Connor. What I missed?
I think that's a good, good report.
Let me make a statement. It's, um, it's important, people who are listening, to call your delegates and senators because tomorrow, the General Assembly meets at noon. And most of these votes will be done by midnight. Uh, there's push to, so ask them to, um- There's push to, so ask them to not vote for, you know, support cap for us, a district like ours, will be about a million dollars, roughly. Seventeen and a half positions. If I take $50,000, it's 850, but you add benefits to that, so it puts us in a hole by about a million dollars. In scheme of things, in the current budget situation, with the already hole in the hole by 2.8, this is a lot of money. A billion dollar for Lynchburg City Schools is a dollar increase to our hourly wage employees. That's what it is. Right, Ms. James? That's, a dollar is about a million dollars to our hourly wage employee. So it's about people. It's about humans, and I know they need money in the rainy fund day. That's where their money is going. And I've been calling. I'll be there tomorrow in Richmond. I plan to be there. I'll arrive there around 11:00, and if you're there, please do join me. I'll be in the Capitol between Senate and House, making sure that people here, that we need this veto to be, or amendment or veto, whatever it is, to be overturned and sent back to the governor the way it was. We need those support caps to be lifted. I for one, I'm speaking as an individual school board member, because it'll put us in a financial bind by about a million dollars. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry if I said too much. You good?
That's all we have?
Thank you. The next one was... Dr. Day? Joint City School Board Committee Report, Dr. Day.
Okay. So this joint committee met this past Thursday, and we're meeting again, really for the last time, as, as a separate committee, day after tomorrow, April 3, to decide on what this committee is actually going to recommend. I had asked, I did ask all the members of this joint committee to give me in writing their suggestions for what we might recommend, and I spent all morning sort of correlating all their suggestions and putting together a document that lists all the suggestions that were offered to me. That document is now publicly available. It's attached to the agenda for our upcoming meeting day after tomorrow. It may be a long meeting, because there are, well, three pages of suggestions, and that's after I edited it. There's probably, I don't know, 50 or 100 different suggestions that were given, and so we're going to have to comb through all of that. What will happen then is, assuming we are successful on Thursday in deciding just what our recommendation will be containing, and then it will be my job to write a final document incorporating all those, give the joint committee a chance to edit it, and then present it to the combined school board and city council at the joint meeting on April 29. So that's where that stands. Any questions?
I had, but I'll give opportunity for anybody else. I had just one request, Dr. Day. During discussion, we have to keep in mind that the kids are front and center. They are humans. They are not widgets, you know? We're dealing with people breathing, and we should not talk like five students less or two students less. They are human, and we got to treat them and, you know, respect them as humans. So hopefully, the discussion will be focused on dealing with the nature of people, our stakeholders.
Needs of the students.
Yes. Students should be the front and center of all the discussion. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is new business, Perkins Grant, Dr. Copeland.
I'd like to ask Mr. Dooley to come to the podium to discuss the Perkins Grant. This is an annual occurrence and to support our career and technical education programs.
Good evening. Thank you all for this opportunity. Always enjoy a chance to talk about our great CTE programs that we have here in Lynchburg City. This is a long report, so I've kind of presented a summary to you all instead of going through the 60 to 70 pages of it. Basically, the Perkins Act Plan, it's Perkins 5, it's required to be presented to the school board and also to CTE Advisory Board, which I did earlier today, to get their approval before we can submit it to the state. And again, since it is such a lengthy document, I have kind of come up with a summary to go over quickly with you all, because I know the most important thing you all want to discuss is where the money's going and how much we will, much we should get. So kind of looking at it, part one, that's kind of the, that's the certification tab, which basically is the signature of myself, Dr. Connor, Dr. Gupta, the Advisory Board Chairman, and the CTE representative at CVCC. The part two is the Academic Performance Report Card. This tells us how our CTE students do compared to just the normal student population. Our CTE students always exceed in the graduation rate of the normal one. Our graduation rate last year for CTE completers, I believe, was right around 96%. So again, if students find a CTE program to be committed to, they come to school and they graduate. That's, you know, the best-selling point I can ever make about CTE is when we get students involved, they come to school, they graduate, and then they contribute to our community. We did not meet the standards in two areas, and that was, one of them was in science. Our SOL scores for CTE students was, I think, 83%, and it needed to be 86 to reach the state standard, so I think that's something that we can improve on next year. And the other one is our non-traditional placement, that is students, such as a female student in a automotive class and a male student in cosmetology. We were around 17%. The state standard is 29%. I've been presenting this Perkins Plan for the last 14 to 15 years, and I think only once in my time have we, have any, the districts that I was at met that criteria. It's one that gets completely questioned every year, and I'm hoping that that standard will come down to a more reasonable number at some point. We get into the different sections of the Perkins Plan, and they're just building information. The first part is listing our CTE Advisory Committee members. The second part, Schedule 2, is, Schedule 3 lists the career pathways that we presented in the past years. Last year, we presented game design. This year, we're presenting a plan of study for plumbing, because our students, even though we're not offering plumbing at Lynchburg City Schools, our students do have a chance this year to take, next year, to take plumbing at the CTE Academy and CVCC. So I thought this was a good plan of study to create to show what our students should be taking until they get to the point that they can take that at CVCC with the CTE Academy. Schedule 4 is the opportunities our students have in special populations, and we do not have any barriers. Our students in special populations are able to take, take any CTE courses that our normal students would take as well. Schedule 5, it's how we will strengthen our academic and technical skills, one that I would like to share with you all for next year, and I'm sure you've probably maybe seen this in the paper, but CVCC is going to offer free dual enrollment for all students next year. That's statewide, but statewide, it's not CTE-wise. CVCC has decided that they're going to include the CTE students in there. So this is, these are programs that are taught at our high school. So currently, we've been offering it in culinary and drafting. Next year, we're going to be able to offer that through our criminal justice programs as well. So again, that is a way that we are strengthening our programs. Schedule 6 describes how our CTE students provide strong work-based learning opportunities. These are clinicals, internships, apprenticeships. We had two students start in January at Terry Subaru. They go to school half a day, and then they go to work and get school credit for it in the afternoon. Schedule 7 is how we list ways that the Perkins funds to develop and improve and expand the use of technology. Just this afternoon, was talking with our health science teachers. We're going to look at adding iPads to their programs, because they're much easier to take to the bedside or to the dental chair side than a Chromebook or a computer would be. And it's something that was more used in the industry as well. Eight is the types of professional development activities that our teachers have. We do that on a local level. They have state conferences they go to during the summer, and then we do national conferences in the fall as well that I've not only take teachers to, but counselors, so that we can know that they're working together as a team, because the counselors need to know what is out there in the CTE world just as much as the teachers do. Schedule 9 is how do we evaluate our programs, and that is mainly done through our CTE Advisory Program, and then each program is, we're in the process of each program setting up their own advisory board as well. Schedule 10 is a checklist of how LCS, excuse me, will improve, expand, and modernize CTE programs, and we really do this by yearly inventories. And at the end of the year, teachers usually come up with a wish list for what they're going to need the following year. If we've got money left over in the spring, we go in and start preparing and buying some of that equipment. Otherwise, we know that's what we're going to start the year off with when we, when we come back. Schedule 11 is how we use this data to make decisions. Every two years, we're required to do a local needs assessment. That is when we really go into the labor market and compare the labor market data with the programs that we are, that we have here to make sure that these students are having an opportunity for jobs when they do graduate, that there are jobs in this 12 is our career pathways. 13 is how we will ensure the equity provisions with the Education Provision Act, and basically that I was saying is if someone has an issue that they say that for some reason, based on something equality-wise, they were not allowed into a program, there is a grievance process through the 504 system that we already have in place with Lynchburg City Schools. 14 is, provides the labor market information, and where do we get that? We get that a lot from Region 2000 data, Lynchburg Business and Regional, Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, Virginia Works, and the Department of Labor all contribute to that Schedule 15 doesn't apply, because we do not have a regional CTE program, even though we do take part in the CTE Academy. That's more considered dual enrollment than it is staying in a regional academy. And then finally, 6 is summarizes the amount of state and local money that we spend on CTE personnel, and that is, that would include the students, I mean, the teachers, as well as our career counselor. Now for the good part. This is the CTE staff proposal for local plan expenditures for the 25-26 year. Before we get into this, I'd like to tell you that this data is based on the amount of funds we got last year. The state does not release the funds until later in the year. It's one of those things where our deadlines for submission is April 30, and we never, I've never gotten the totals, our expenditure, or what our allocations are going to be until the earliest May, and honestly, the last two years have been June and July. At that point, we have to, they deny our submission. I have to put the new numbers in and resubmit, and then it gets approved, because it was already good just other than, other than the numbers. So looking at this, number-wise, if we go to the next slide. Professional development, we set aside $25,000 for that. The big chunk of our funding goes towards equipment. That's $171,000 to pay for expenses for students to travel, to student leadership opportunities, organizations, such as we have about 35 students going to Roanoke this weekend for Skills USA. We have 10 other students going to Virginia Beach for FCCLA. We've also had students go to state competitions in DECA, which is our marketing students, and then also HOSA, which is our health science students, and those both were done earlier in March. I am proud to say that two of our students in the HOSA, our nurse aide program at Heritage, have qualified for Nationals, and those two students will be going to Nationals in June in Nashville, Tennessee. So we're hoping after this weekend, we're going to say we're going to have students from Skills USA going to Atlanta this summer and from FCCLA going to Orlando this summer. That is, that is my passion, is getting these students out in these organizations and competitions. So we have $18,000 set aside for that. As you see up there, we have $11,000 set aside for our CTE Summer Camp. This is something that we did last year for the first time. We hooked, we kind of connected it to the middle school summer school program at Sandusky. They did three weeks of remediation, and then the fourth week, it was CTE Camp. We had six different pathways everywhere, from criminal justice to dental, to cosmetology, to drafting, to programming, to 3D animation. Students got to pick a pathway for each day, so they did five different pathways in five days, and it was a huge success, and because of Dr. Davis really liking the program, we're going to try to make sure that we do that again this summer. And that was when I met Mr. Hensley. I was sitting outside eating a biscuit last year when he came up, and I don't know that I really looked like a school employee that day, because I was moving, but I did introduce myself and tell him what, what are the great things that we were doing that day.
I called the police at first.
Yeah, as well, you probably should have. We put away, set aside $40,000 for software and our CTE programs. This is Adobe Photoshop, Illustrator, those type of programs. As I said, we do the $18,000 for the students going to CTSO competitions. We have $5,000 set aside for recruitment of these non-traditional students. Again, we have, I have to write a program, I have to write in the Perkins Plan what, how we plan on doing that. One of them is, there's a program called In Her Own Words, and it's a series of posters showing females in non-traditional workspaces. Also, there's videos that the teachers can show in the classroom as well. And then finally, we have $1,500 set aside for our CTE follow-up survey that has to be done every summer. I've done it the last two summers, but this year, we will probably hire someone, because we have several other things going on this summer that I'm going to be a part of, but this is something that I did when I was in Franklin County as well. Basically, this person will call students that are a year after graduating, asking them the courses and the certifications that they earned in high school, how are they related to whether they're in school, work, or the military at this point? So that wraps it up. That comes to a total of $272,000. Last year, when I presented this to you, we were using the year before's numbers, and it was $257,000. So we did get an increase last year of $15,000. So that, that wraps up my presentation. I'd be glad to open it up to questions now.
Questions?
Whatever you'd like to talk about. I could talk CTE all night.
Well, my question stems from the one committee meeting I was on, the Zoom one. So you would still have to do fundraisers, though, to get, for monies that you don't have to cover, that the Perkins Grant doesn't, correct?
Mainly, the fundraising we do is to help support students when we send them to these competitions. Perkins does not allow us to really pay for the food for them to eat, and I feel like, just, you know, just like when we send our athletic programs to regional and state competitions, we should not be asking our CTE students to pay for their own food. We need to help make, you know, and a lot of them can't afford it. That would be a barrier to keep them from being able to participate. So we do, the Education Foundation really steps up and helps. We do a golf tournament, by the way. It's May 31. If any of you golfers, we'd love to have you, but that helps raise money again for us to be able to feed these students, give them a little good activity. We're going to take, you know, we're going to Roanoke, like you said, this weekend. Roanoke's nice, but it's not that much, not real exciting for teenage students, so we're going to take them to a Salem Red Sox game on Saturday night, and we're going to feed them there, and then that way, we'll all be together, have a good team building, and then hopefully go and accept a bunch of awards on Sunday morning.
So you've been able to raise the money that, for the kids on the side?
This year, we're in good shape, I believe. Again, we don't know when students go to Nationals, but again, by us doing the golf tournament at May 31, that puts us more money in the pot that now, that we can use for this summer for our national conferences.
Okay, that's good.
Is that money in addition to what you have here?
Yes.
Okay. About $18,000 doesn't seem like enough for...
Yeah, $18,000 is a drop in the bucket to pay for registration and hotels. Just to give you an example, we sent 40 health science students, that is, our dental program and our nurse aide, to Williamsburg Estates, just for the registration, and the hotel was $12,500.
I believe it.
Yeah.
Other questions for Mr. Dooley?
Do you have a custom, customer resource management for those who donate year by year so you can follow up with them and tell them how you've done and what you raised and what you need for the following year?
We really don't, because really, the only fundraising tool mechanism we have right now is the golf tournament, and they do that by either, they support us by either doing team registration, or they could sponsor a hole, which is $125 for business, but then if they're a repeat, we knock it down to 100, because we can reuse the sign.
And you know they're repeat just because they say so?
I keep, I keep the spreadsheets from year to year, so I can check to see that they were, that they did participate the year before.
Okay.
And I've already got their sign, so if I got their sign, I know that they participated.
Yeah.
All right. I'm sure you can upload those spreadsheet... All right. I'm sure you can upload those spreadsheets to a good CRM one day and make it happen faster. Another question I have is that, the two failed criteria, the one of them at 17%, is that something you can put together a little fact sheet with for and give it to the Legislative Advocacy Committee that we have here on the school board? Because we could take that and do some advocacy to change that at Richmond.
Yeah, like I said, the annual performance report that comes out, we get that yearly. So it kind of shows where we've been, and we've been consistent in the 16 to 17% range in the three years that I've been here. And then, you know, looking previous, that was about the same as well.
You know what I'm saying, though?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that way, we can get them, I mean, can show them the information of where we are at. And to show them, you know, I cannot pull other people's districts, but they would be able to look into other districts to see that the majority of districts do not meet that criteria.
Yeah, if you could provide that information to us, we can take that and do something with it.
Be glad to, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? And those will be approved.
Second.
Mrs. Lowry, any further discussion? Madam Chair, would you please call the room?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tins?
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Hold on. Mr. Dooley, we're going to sign the CTE, this Perkins Grant document. Normally, we do it behind the scenes. We'll do it in public today. And Ms. Lowry, you are chair of ASC and a champion of CTE. I asked Dr. Copeland, is it okay for you to sign? Is that okay? And I'll be happy to co-sign if needed. Normally, chair signs it, but it'd be honor if you sign it.
I totally agree.
While we get signatures, do you have any other information you wanted to share with us tonight?
Actually, I am about to bust to get ready to do that. Very excited. About a month ago, Dr. Copeland put me in contact with Leger McQueen, who is the head of Beacon of Hope. And she has been in contact with, I'm sure we're all familiar with Intuit TurboTax, the software people. Well, they are in the business now of giving away, donating food trucks to communities. They've done it to eight different cities across the country. I know Denver, San Diego are some of the ones that they've done. They interviewed Ms. McQueen and myself a few weeks ago. And I got an email yesterday. I'm glad I didn't get it today because if I got it today, I would have been thinking it was an April Fool's joke. But they have selected Lynchburg City to donate a $250,000 customized food truck for our culinary program to use.
Excellent.
We will be able to take it to events, you know, as our food truck. We will be able to take it to the middle school to expose them to more commercial-type kitchens, career days at the elementary schools. But because we're going to use it across all three, that is one of the reasons that I feel like we were picked. One of the exciting things that they're going to do is they're going to come in later this school year, once we get your all's approval, because we will have to present to you all, hopefully at the next meeting, the letter showing what everything to get your approval. But they will come in and they want to get our marketing and our culinary students together to come up with the design, what they want to call it. We certainly, you know, don't want to call it the Lynchburg City Food Truck, School's Food Truck. We want something exciting, something that, you know, the logo that represents our community. And once they get that information from our students, and again, they will be once created, and what kind of menu we'll serve, then they will take that truck and they will get it professionally wrapped for us this summer. And if all goes well, we will have it to start the school year next year.
Excellent. Now, is this an actual truck or just a trailer?
This is a truck, drivable truck.
Okay.
And I didn't know if we had talked about this before, but the Mike Rowe Grant, that does Dirty Jobs, doesn't he have a CTE scholarship?
Who's that?
Mike Rowe?
Mike Rowe, yeah, I know that they do scholarships as well, yes.
Yeah, so if we haven't, like, plugged into that, that would probably be a good place to look as well to help with some of the other things that you need to help with outside the Perkins Grant.
And again, just, you know, to say again, thank you all so much for your support. Again, I have been in two other districts before this, and I felt like I was supported there, but nothing like the support I get in Lynchburg City. The funding is there. You know, our teachers do not go without for CTE. If they need something, we've got the funding for it. And whenever we fall in short because of Perkins, you all have been there to step up and help us. So I tremendously thank you for that, and our teachers and students really benefit from it.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you all so much. You all have a great evening.
Next one is Elementary Efficiency, Dr. Copeland and Mr. Connor.
Do you want to kick it off, Mr. Connor?
Well, I'm looking at this PowerPoint. I think it's time to make it clear.
Maybe you should explain the Cities and Finance Committee's position.
After we received the information from the city council based on the amount of operating, not just operating funds, but also CIP funds, we recognized that we would not have enough money to operate the way we need to operate. I believe our interim superintendent has done a great job. We were bouncing around ideas on what we could do. And he was working in the background, I believe him and Dr. Waterco working in the background, came up with what we think is an excellent proposal. Yes, it hurts that we have to make some changes. But like what I said, on the task force, the joint task force, if we don't have the money, we can't do things, you know, if I don't have enough money, I can't put a swimming pool in the backyard. I just, you know, I have to visit the neighbors. I know that's kind of a silly representation, but we have to make some decisions. What frightens me is what took place in Norfolk. Norfolk is, much like Lynchburg City at a greater level, because it's a bigger city, has a declining population, declining student population. With a decline in student population, we also have declining revenues. And Norfolk continually said, we're not going to do anything, we're not going to do anything. And it required Norfolk City Council, this is in the latest news the last couple of weeks, the city council had to file a ordinance requiring them to close 10 schools in the next two fiscal years. I don't want that to happen here. We have to be fiscally responsible with the amount of revenues that we get. Sometime, it's going to be some hard choices. Sometime, we're not always going to be able to go six months, eight months, 12 months ahead of time to get everybody involved because we don't know that far ahead of time. So some people, I've heard that we are making knee-jerk decisions. Well, it's not a knee-jerk decision. When we ask for a certain amount of revenue, we have to wait for the city to tell us what they're going to give us. We have to wait for the governor and the legislature to decide what they're going to do. And we have to have contingency plans. So it's not a knee-jerk reaction, but it is probably what we would consider worst-case scenario, but it's something that we must do. So I think when we look at this proposal, it's done in phases. We're trying to do, because one of the things we need to do is we have several elementary schools that need a lot of renovations. And I know the proposal was out, or consideration of building a new school. And we looked at, we gave it a serious look. And that is also something that we're not going to be able to do at this time because of the needs, not the delayed maintenance needs. I believe we have six elementary schools that have, really are at the, probably at the end of where we could, you know, they're safe. So we have to make some decisions. We have to move forward on a plan. So I think the plan that Dr. Copeland came up with, although it causes some pain for some people, I believe it gets us moving in the right direction to become fiscally responsible. And it also does some things to help some families. We have some families where they let me know that if their child gets sick at school or their child, something happens at school, they live so far from the school. So part of this is, we are rezoning a couple, a couple select neighborhoods because they are, these parents are the farthest from those schools. Their child gets sick, their child gets in trouble, their parent usually has to get an Uber or a neighbor or try to get public transportation. So we're looking at the children. It's important. And we got a couple neighborhoods that we are looking to rezone just a little bit to make it better for those families that get them at least a couple select groups closer to home. And a couple of these neighborhoods are some of our lowest income neighborhoods with the most needs. So I think helping those parents have more access to the local school would also be a benefit. So I turn it over to you, Dr. Copeland.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. This presentation was presented at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting on March 18th. They voted that it be brought forward to the full board for consideration at that meeting. Who's controlling slides?
You can.
All right. I'm not going to look at the screen so that I can look at y'all. So the overall plan has multiple phases, but where we begin is the critical component. And that is a repurposing of TC Miller and some select elementary rezonings that Mr. Connor talked to. Phase one itself can be broken down into three different parts for phase one. The first is TC Miller ceasing to exist as a K through five elementary school. Transitioning TC Miller to serve early childhood education, which we have pre-K programs that serve both three- and four-year-olds. And we also serve a growing population of early childhood special education students. The last component of repurposing TC Miller would be a consolidation of elementary alternative ed programs. So the Transition Assistance Program that's currently at Bass Elementary would move to TC Miller to be co-located with the Restorative Academy that's currently there. The last part of this first phase of a multi-phase plan are those select rezonings. Just to give you some numbers relative to TC Miller, TC Miller's enrollment this year has been in the 160s. And for elementary students, we have Hutcheson Early Learning Center, which currently serves 206 students. And we have elementary schools that have pre-K programs in them that serve 156 students. So the map that's up on the screen just gives you a visual representation of where all the students live that attend TC Miller. So folks from all over the city attend TC Miller. And if you looked at their school zone, it's what I call a postage-stamped school zone. It's a very tight inner core of the city for their zone students. This next slide talks to where the students are coming from, thus where they would return to. So the biggest component of this is invited students would return to their base school or their zone school. So if you think about that map, many of those different colored dots would return back to their base school. The TC Miller Zone students, which are in a smaller area, would be pretty much equally balanced between Perrymont and RS Payne. There are four school zones that touch the TC Miller Zone. Darrington Elementary School, Perrymont, RS Payne, and Sheffield. Oakley Avenue flows through the middle of the TC Miller Zone and splits those students into a group of 31 students that would go to Perrymont and a group of 36 students that would go to RS Payne. All these numbers in this chart are reflective of the current enrollment of the building. We just advanced them one grade level. And if TC Miller didn't include anything for kindergarteners for next year. So converting it to an early childhood, the building is currently organized around 17 classroom spaces. When you look at the pre-K programs that exist at Perrymont, Paul Monroe, and RS Payne, they comprise 10 classrooms, four at Paul Monroe, three at Perrymont Elementary School, and three at RS Payne. Respectively, there are 61 students at Paul Monroe, 48 at Perrymont, and 47 at RS Payne. By bringing all of these classrooms together, we provide much better coordination amongst the teachers and the staff of the building to serve students that are beginning their educational journey. Another component that I've alluded to is that we support a lot of three- and four-year-olds in early childhood special education. Right now, all of those students, and I think they number somewhere around 60 to 65, are currently served out of Hutcheson Early Learning Center. Having 60 students with unique needs amongst a population of 206 is a significant challenge for that staff on a daily basis, but they have made it work. By opening a second pre-kindergarten building, we have an opportunity to better balance that such that we have kind of an equal number of pre-K classrooms in each building and that there's early childhood special education students. Some of these students come for full day, some of them come for half-day in the morning, some of them come for half-day in the afternoon. They might be at another facility out in town and then come to us for those special services. By keeping the Restore Academy at TC Miller and then bringing the Transition Program from Bass to TC Miller, we clearly have the six classrooms needed for those two programs to be supported within the building of TC Miller. And this really satisfies some of the objectives and goals that we've talked about, about consolidation of alternative ed. This is phase one, which is consolidation of elementary alternative education. The last piece of this proposal revolves around two island school zones. On the left-hand side of the screen, you see the Birchwood Zone in purple. It is wholly surrounded by the Darrington Elementary School Zone. Those students attend Perrymont Elementary School and ride a bus every day to get there. On the right-hand side of the screen is the area along Florida Avenue in the Winston Ridge neighborhoods. Those students attend Heritage Elementary School. They ride a bus every day to get there. And if you look at the brown areas that surround their reddish-colored school zone, that is the Bass Elementary Attendance Zone. So rezoning of the Birchwood and the Florida Avenue Winston Ridge neighborhoods, Darrington Elementary would be our preferred location to send the children from the Birchwood apartment complex because that is the zone that surrounds their apartment complex. Due to the nature of the zone, it's not the closest, as the crow flies, the closest school to their apartment complex is actually Lincoln Elementary School. You just can't get there directly with a school bus. You got to drive around Crane Hill and other areas. Additionally, by providing extra students to Darrington in its enrollment has slipped over the years. And providing extra students at Darrington in a building that has successful programming and successful outcomes is in the best interest of those children. The Florida Avenue Winston Ridge neighborhoods, there are 67 students that live in that cluster. And we recommend that they be sent to Bass Elementary. Bass Elementary's unique programming with intercessions and remediation opportunities has proved successful for many, many years. And Bass Elementary has the capacity to help those students. So all of this packaged together with the TC Miller closure, the rezone option, opening the pre-K. When we look at everything combined, we have gone through the detailed staffing of the elementary schools that will be gaining students. Of the teacher FTEs that are assigned to TC Miller, we will need three of them to make this work. Make sure I get this right. In the big scheme of things, with 67 students leaving Heritage Elementary School and going to Bass, Heritage Elementary School would lose three teaching positions, Bass would gain four. Bass is the largest gaining building of any of the schools affected in this plan as they will gain the students from the Florida Avenue Winston Ridge neighborhood. And then they will return the base zone school students. So they will increase by approximately 80 students. Darrington Elementary School will need two additional teachers due to their increased student capacity. So everything said, across all elementary schools, we'll need three teaching positions at TC Miller to make this work. We will need some of the building-level staff because we're going to keep TC Miller in operation. So I'm still going to need a building leader. We still want to keep the counselor, custodians, attendant, security clerk, nurse, office secretary, and there's probably a few others that I haven't gotten in there. But when you look at the entire cost to maintain TC Miller as a K-5 school versus this transition, I quickly get to a million dollars' worth of savings going forward with this plan. uh I quickly get to a million dollars' worth of savings going forward with this plan. As I said, it's a multi-phase, longer-range plan as we have sixty million dollars' worth of capital improvement planning. Dr. Wodeka gave a presentation to the Joint Task Force several weeks ago about, we have more needs than sixty million dollars, but we're starting to zero in on where our highest priorities are. Uh that is forthcoming. But the next phase of this uh is to decide on a complete elementary renovations and improvements, decide where gyms need to be, if we need any classroom additions at certain schools, uh and look forward towards what additional rezoning needs to be accomplished in the future. Further down the road, once we have consumed the majority of the capital improvement money, we have a window to look at, is there another school at that time that that could be closed as an elementary school and gives us an opportunity to consider a consolidation of secondary alternative education. Fort Hill, as we all know, is space limited. Uh for those of you that sit on discipline committees, they are always at full capacity, uh and we need more capacity. So at a when a second and if a second school is closed, it gives us an opportunity to look at whether or not it could function best as an alternative education site for secondary students. If that move was made, then there is always the consideration and hope that you can grow your pre-K programs. If you can grow your PK programs and put more pre-K in TC Miller, then you could use the Fort Hill Community School as a possible location for elementary alternative education uh because the needs in the elementary uh schools are not as high as they are in middle school and high school. It lends itself to that in the out-years. These are just the phases uh to be considered uh at a future time. In closing, I always like to clarify for everybody the why behind I make this recommendation. It's a known fact that I that our school population has decreased by roughly twelve-hundred students over the past decade. Our utilization rate of our elementary schools is a little bit low and could increase. By doing this, we do increase the utilization rate at our elementary schools. There is a million dollars' worth of savings in this approach. I will always support better opportunities for three- and four-year-olds in this city because every opportunity a four-year-old has to go to pre-K prepares them for kindergarten the next year. There are many different challenges that our four-year-olds present and not only present with educational challenges and identifications of letters, numbers, and colors, but they present with socialization challenges because they have not been around other children for extended periods of time. Simple things like getting in a line and going to the cafeteria for lunch take weeks sometimes for a four-year-old to learn the whole process. Select rezoning is a component of what this board has talked about previously about close to home. We are taking two island school zones and sending them to a school that is much closer to where they live. My hope is that less time on bus might lead to better student engagement. Closer to where the families live might lead to better parental engagement. We all know that better parental engagement in our schools leads to better success for our students. We haven't put a number on it yet, but there is some bus savings in this from an operational perspective. But given the ever-changing uh rates on fuel and electricity, uh any savings would really just be kept within transportation budget. And it gets us one step towards alternative ed consolidation and that it tackles the elementary school components. That's the presentation that I gave to Finance Committee. I will do my best to answer any questions you might have. Uh it's not up for a vote tonight. We have a public hearing that is being announced tomorrow. It will be held here as our work session on April the eighth so that the public has an opportunity to comment on this, and then this will be before you on April eighth for action.
I just wanted to emphasize that legally, uh we cannot do much detail till the public hearing is done. Do the bare minimum, go ahead, Mrs. Lowry.
Well, I just know that a lot of people are concerned, so probably good to speak to it about the class sizes. So in my mind, I'm thinking you would just increase the number of class sizes that you need, add an extra class or whatever. So the majority is going to Bass, so can you speak to so people can understand how the class sizes will work when the children move there?
Sure, and that's a... Hold on, let me get my... Bass will be getting four extra teachers. Um and uh we've taken a look across the board, so there's a couple of things in doing this. We have to keep the K-three class size where it needs to be. For the majority of their schools, that's nineteen, okay? Additionally, we really like to keep the fourth and fifth grade classes less than twenty-five, but as close to twenty as we can, okay? I don't see, have not seen any significant class size changes of these students being sent back to their base schools, the rezoning, the move to RS Payne, because some of these schools, Perrymont's gonna lose a group, they're gonna gain a group, okay? Bass is, as I mentioned before, Bass is gaining the greatest. But where Bass sits right now, they will have four additional teachers next year. So they will have three teachers in some grade levels to maintain small class size.
Doctor Copeland, could you explain S-nineteen people who are watching? So we have to maintain, we get a grant money, right, for small class size?
Correct, we receive close to a million dollars, two million dollars. Thank you, Ms. Pew. Two million dollars as part of the uh funding from the state for what's called the K-three class size initiative. I think the lowest we have is an eighteen.
Goes from nineteen to twenty-four.
There we go, there's the expert. Uh so we focus very, when we did our elementary staffing review, we really zero in that on those grade levels when we start because if you can't meet those ratios, then you lose a percentage of the funding. And we don't wanna lose a percentage of that funding. So I I have not seen any significant increases in class size in any school.
I just thought that put people's minds.
Thank you.
Doctor Thompson.
Any kind of related question? Building capacities, is how does this affect those numbers?
So to give you some examples, Bedford Hills uh will gain eight students, that will take them roughly to four-hundred students. In twenty-fifteen, they were five-hundred-and-eleven students. Let's see, what's another heavy? Bass, we got the last page. Uh Bass will go to approximately two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-sixty students. Ten years ago, they had three-hundred-and-ten. Okay, so we're still under previous occupancy numbers and use numbers in the past. Another one, Sheffield will gain seven, they'll go to four-nineteen, four-twenty, and they've previously been at at four-sixty-one. Darrington is one, uh Darrington has fluctuated between a hundred-and-eighty and two-hundred-and-ten. Since I got here in twenty-twelve, uh they'll get to two-hundred-and-nineteen with this change. Uh so theirs is the most significant um piece, a number that they haven't seen previously.
So because of declining enrollment, it's not dramatically affecting numbers as far as as what numbers have been? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. Alright, now, and you also said that elementary alternative education would would be housed at Fort Hill. Am I correct about that?
Phase four, way down the...
Way down.
Way down the road.
Okay, what happens with other alternative education?
Well, that that was a kinda, you got an, if you do this, then you could do that. So when you think about after we spend our sixty million dollars and we do all our renovations, if we end up closing another elementary school
Then that provides.
And and it could become a better alternative education building than Fort Hill is. Uh and if that, if if you do secondary alternative education in another building, then you could consider Fort Hill becoming elementary alted.
Okay, so it's all dependent on?
All dependent, there there are many other decision points through this. That's why when you think about that slide that was full of all the words, it started with phase one and then didn't hit phases two, three, and four until the end because there's a first step to start this. Then the next step is going to be zeroing in on how we spend our capital improvement dollars for the most impact, thinking long-term, um so...
Where will our SSOs be? Will they be part of the TC Miller at all or?
I can't even got that far yet. I'll pass.
Okay.
Phone a friend on that one at a later date.
Alright.
And I just have one other question. So whenever you hear the term rezoning, you know, the word legal pops up in your head. Have we done a legal review, had the lawyers look at this? Zones were set up, you know, based on segregation order and those types of things. I'm just kinda wondering if we've looked at that and made sure that this passes the legal test?
We've looked at the uh influx of students that are going into certain buildings. We have not specifically called in for a legal opinion on this. Over the history of Lynchburg, uh post-desegregation order, there have been several iterations of changes in the way we delivered school. I guess the easiest way to point out some of that is this, at one point, there was what I call a four-tier approach to education, and Dr. Wodeka will keep me honest on this, and that there was a primary school at kindergarten through third grade. There was an elementary school, there was a junior high, and there was a high school, okay? And uh when you think about some of these smaller buildings like Hutcheson and Laurel, uh they were one of those, I think it might have been Hutcheson and Bass, that might have been the package deal, that Hutcheson was primary and Bass was elementary. Uh as things changed over time, we moved to an elementary, middle school, high school approach. So s- some of these zones have been adjusted uh since the years of the original desegregation order, just keeping a focus on, don't break it, just try to make it a little bit better.
Sure.
Go ahead, please.
In that timeframe, there's also been several schools that have closed, so...
Kaiser, well Kaiser.
What was Kaiser, then Garland Rhodes, uh school...
Armstrong.
Armstrong School closed, so it's just...
And as those schools closed, uh those students got rezoned to different areas.
Good?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is it true that?
Go ahead. I was looking at you, but you never raised your hand, go ahead.
That um the innovation school curricula will just simply disappear and the students will go into another school without any of those bells and whistles?
Because the innovation at TC Miller is school-specific, that is that is accurate. What we are looking to do is to take the arts team uh that does a phenomenal job at TC Miller and find the right location in another facility that has a sufficient performing arts space that then they can take the great things that they do at TC Miller and expand it to a larger school.
Sounds like Sandusky, actually, now that you say that, they have a large...
Sandusky has what I'd call a gymatorium cafeteria. Okay, uh it has a stage that does PE movement ed classes and lunch on the other side of the super screen. Uh if you take a look at the uh the spaces of Bass Elementary or RS Payne that have a dedicated auditorium-type space, that's what we're considering uh to be the next launch point for a for an arts program.
Hey, another question. Go ahead.
While you're doing this, consider, I've always been looking at Fort Hill and seeing what other building can take Fort Hill because it's it's so small. Keep looking, keep trying to consider, I've thought of Hutcheson, the faculty and staff of Hutcheson switching with Fort Hill. I've thought about other things, but um I'd really like that to be solved at some point.
I hear you. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Copeland and Mr. Connor. Next one is a board member reports, GovSchool, Mrs. Lowry.
Okay, we had a meeting on March fifth and they updated their cell phone policy. It had already been done, they were, it was just in the meeting. And their selection for twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six is already um gone in motion. So now, Friday, April eleventh, students must accept their position. Um if they're going to come and registration meeting for new juniors and their families will be seven PM on Wednesday, May seventh. The annual CVGS Research Symposium will occur in the Schule Hall on campus of the University of Lynchburg on Wednesday, April twenty-third from seven to nine PM. And uh the senior recognition ceremony is scheduled for May fourth um from two to four at Heritage High School Auditorium, and this is also open to the public. And our next meeting is May seventh um at one PM.
Thank you, next is Laurel, again, you, Mrs. Lowry. Laurel?
Uh we haven't had a meeting.
STEM Academy, Mr. Connor.
Okay, I got a lot of information. We had a board meeting on March eighteenth and um had several positive things coming out of the STEM Academy. They had a open house back in um early March. Um they had students attend from every school division and attendance. There were a hundred-and-fifty-plus attended the event, learned about the STEM Academy and the current students, alumni, and instructors, demonstrations and tours of the STEM STEM Academy and facilities. Spring twenty-twenty-five, planning with juniors for the twenty-five, twenty-six classes and internship possibilities. Um planning with seniors to register for graduation and review post-secondary plans. Um things like entering the workforce, maintaining, remaining, some want to remain at CVC, some are joining the military, Navy, Marines, and some are planning to attend four-year college and university. Students began the internships on January eighth, twenty-twenty-five. There were eleven internship locations in Central Virginia, and there will be internship presentations on Wednesday, April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Student applications for the twenty-twenty-five um school year. Amherst had thirteen applicants, Appomattox nine, Bedford fourteen, Campbell thirty-eight, and Lynchburg twenty, for a total of ninety-four applicants. Um number of approved seats, Amherst had three, Appomattox two, um Bedford eight, Campbell six, Lynchburg seven, and they had one scholarship student. Um applications, the selection, members will review applications and meet the week of March twenty-fourth and March twenty-fifth. So that was last week, and they were going over the applications and they're mailing notifications to the students. Um they mailed them out by March twenty-eighth. And they will work with schools and the waitlist until open slots are filled for twenty-five, twenty-six. So there might be, if one division has more applicants than seats and those seats aren't filled, then they will offer those seats to a different division. Um student may use their high school transcript to qualify for placement. Math placement must have a three-point-oh cumulative GPA and be enrolled in Algebra II or have completed Algebra II with a grade of C or better. And English placement must have a three-point-oh above in cumulative GPA. Um upcoming events for the STEM Academy, STEM applications due was due March first. STEM activation meetings will March twenty-fourth, March twenty-fifth. STEM application notifications for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five was March twenty-eighth. STEM internship presentation will be April thirtieth. The senior dinner and awards will be May thirteenth, and commencement will be May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. That's all I have for the STEM Academy.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Next one is Finance and Facilities Chair, Mr. Connor.
We will be reviewing, once again, some information that's coming to us from the Joint Task Force. We're also gonna be reviewing um the document that um you sent me. Well, I had some questions about staffing over a period of time along with enrollment, so we're gonna be looking at that and um also thinking, looking at some recommendations of what we wanna go, because we wanna go back to the city and see if we can modify the way they wanna issue the um CIP funds. So we, you know, we're gonna get down and dirty about the CIP because we got a lot of work to do. So we're gonna see if we can't, if they can't work with us a little more, maybe get us, front-load some of those funds a little more.
We'll talk, yeah, that's a discussion for later. LSER Chair, Mr. Gilley.
Uh yes.
We, as a committee, have discussed a number of bills, and there is a a bill, not in the local area, but the federal level, called HR 5349, that our recommendation is for our board to support it and allow us to write two letters to our senators in support of this so that it will pass as possible. It's already passed the House and has gone into the federal Senate. This bill is an act to develop and disseminate a civic education curriculum and oral history resources, which I take to be personnel with personal experience teaching about this. Regarding certain political ideologies and for other purposes, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America in Congress assembled, the act may be cited as the Crucial Communism Teaching Act. The purpose of this act is to help families, civic institutions, local communities, local educational agencies, high schools, and state educational agencies to prepare high school students to be civically responsible and knowledgeable adults, to ensure that high school students in the United States learn that communism has led to the deaths of over 100 million victims worldwide, understand the dangers of communism and similar political ideologies, and understand that 1.5 billion people still suffer under communism. It has a few more things, but that is the summary of this, and we are in support of it.
Thank you. Next is Academic Success Committee, Mrs. Lowry, Chair, Mrs. Lowry.
We have a meeting this week, but we are going to be going over the literacy coaches' math schedule because they can also use their time to help math, and our children need help with math. A teacher treasure box with input from all sources as a resource for anybody who would like it to get help, counsel, or information on behavior, or from elementary all the way through high school, or how you do this or that and the other in a class, or teach a certain lesson, just, it's a resource. Senior night, still waiting to hear from two of the counselors, one at each high school, about the legacy showing up on their senior nights, and the Blue Ridge Pregnancy Center coming to have dating information. And the math adoption timeline, we're still waiting on that from the books adoption. SOL ideas that will come in from the PLCs to share with the Secretary of Department of Education here in Virginia. And she is looking forward to some answers that might help with the. She knows that we need the number, she said, for testing, but she knows that there are problems and kids need more time before taking tests, so she's open to ideas. So these ideas are what we want to pass on to her. And also preschool testing and a PD with Dr. Black, which one of our business partners, who is well-informed, educated, and on ADHD and recognizing some symptoms, a better way to recognize them and, because some things are treatable. So she would love to do a PD with K through eighth-grade teachers. So it's something we're going to be talking about in new business.
Thank you. Next one is Partners in Education, Mr. Andrews and Dr. Tinsley.
It's kind of a slow time for Pi Board right now. So an ad hoc committee between LCS Educational Foundation and the Pi Board has been instituted. I'm going to discuss the relationship between the two entities and how they can better collaborate moving forward. So for the time being, general Pi Board meetings have been suspended until this ad hoc committee can do their work. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. LCS Ed Foundation, Mr. DePaul and Mr. Jalil.
I think the Ed Foundation did a great job with the superintendent's breakfast, and I think the superintendent did a good job as well in his speech. Congrats. A lot of people know you a lot better now.
Big review.
Yeah. And Don Wise did a great job here. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Next is Beacon of Hope, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Preston.
Okay. Beacon of Hope, the Heritage and EC Glass Future Center teams took 50 juniors to Virginia Tech last week. Interviews for the summer internship program will take place on April 23rd at the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. 125 Heritage and EC Glass juniors and seniors will have an opportunity to interview with more than 20 local companies, which is a great opportunity for all of them. The Commonwealth Scholarship application is closed now. Recipients can receive up to $5,000 to attend any accredited two-year, four-year trade school or technical school in Virginia. The class of 2025 recipients will be announced in late April.
Thank you. Next one is Superintendent Commons, Dr. Copeland.
Yeah, a few things to highlight for everybody on the board. If you like sports, this is your time of the year. We've got baseball, softball, tennis, track, lacrosse, soccer. I think I got them all. But there's something going on at every high school, every day of the week, middle schools many times during the week. It's also our, beginning our busiest window of testing across the school division. Not only state testing, but AP testing will be coming up here shortly as students wind down the year. And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the theater performances that are going on across the school division. There's something every weekend in April except for one. This weekend, TC Miller does Seussical Junior, the 3rd through the 6th. Heritage High School opens Peter and the Starcatcher on the 4th. It runs for two weekends. Sandusky Middle will do Beetlejuice Junior, try saying that fast. April 25th, 26th, and 27th. And then EC Glass opens Footloose on May the 1st for two weekends. So if you need something fun to do, please check out these schedules and support theater in our schools. These children work very, very hard to pull off this. I was over at TC Miller for a meeting last week, and Ms. Coleman had the students do the opening number for Seussical Junior, and it's just delightful. It really is. So that's all I've got.
I want to know if they offered you any role.
They have not.
Thank you. Mr. Connor, we'll start with you, board comments.
Nothing else.
Thank you. Mr. Jalil.
Yes. First, I'd like to thank the elementary schools that gave us gifts for our school board appreciation month. It was tremendous. I could name a number of schools, but all the different gifts were a blessing. Thank you very much. I hope that the city council does this next year for us. We we are covering a number of issues, and I really hope that we can get on board with making sure that the public is more informed than ever before about our plans and the things that will happen with our local schools. I believe that it could have been done better in the last 18 months. I have ideas of how it could have been better, but hindsight is 20-20, and we have to move forward. So let's keep that in mind, that this is a big team and we have to navigate it better than ever before. One of the LCS parents came up today, and this is something that is very important to comment on. And that is that the 917society.org has produced this booklet, accepted in thousands and thousands of schools across the nation. And it was one of the only booklets that could pass a rigorous test of what is and what is not political. If you look on the back, there is a QR code, which I've never used, but I remember getting a great share of these stamped. Since there was a team, I can't vouch for everyone on the team that they put a stamp on everyone, but a random one I just happen to have on me now has the stamp. And if you look, they're not all going to be in the same place. If people stamped it in different places. So this one is on the inside. If you're looking forward, you might miss it if you just flip through it. But the stamp is here. And this this is something that we should advocate for and not not consider anything that would turn students astray from a good path. I think that we should have more of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights in our in our society and our schools. And I remember something that the parent said, and that is that the Southern Poverty Law Center said that this group or supporters of this group or candidates that somehow this is connected to are hate, are labeled as hate groups. Almost everyone I know knows that the Southern Poverty Law Center itself is a hate group supporter. If it's not a hate group itself, it is a hate group supporter. It supports hate in general, I would say, but you can look up the specifics. So much so, I wrote a little note here that the, it promotes anti-American principles and advocates lawfare against not only conservatives, but any organization that goes against its own principles and its leftist ideologies. So the SPLC, if you can encapsulate it as something, it would be a hate group as an organization. So that designation doesn't hold any water with me and many, many, many other people because they know that SPLC is a hate group supporter. So let's not make it harder to access information. I agree with that, and I'd like to support that. Finally, the Teacher of the Year, Ayana Stamps Glover at Heritage Elementary School. I'd like to give her a hand for 24, 2024-2025 winning Teacher of the Year. Tremendous. She's a Heritage Elementary teacher, and we need more of those. We need people to shine in their vocations. We want people to be rewarded and honored for what they do in the teaching profession. I will bring up the agenda item at the next meeting to vote on the letters of support for HR 5349, which I just mentioned, the Crucial Communism Teaching Act.
Thank you. Dr. De.
I just want to remind board members that the meeting that we currently, that we previously had scheduled for April 22nd has been rescheduled to a week from tonight, April 8th. And I want to point out to you that there are a lot of policy updates in the consent agenda. I count over 30. So you need to do your homework and read through those in advance. If there's any of those that you think you want the board to discuss, when we, at the beginning of the meeting, when we're ready to approve the agenda, you need to, at that point, move to pull any of those items out of the consent agenda and, so that we can talk about them separately. Don't wait until we get to the consent agenda on the, in our meeting before you say, I want to pull such and such out. You need to make that motion at the beginning of the meeting when we are considering whether or not to adopt the agenda. So there's over 30. I think we still have some curriculum and instruction ones to add to. Are they up now?
No, sir. They will go, come in May.
Okay. All right. So, but even apart from those, there's still, I counted over 30, from all kinds of different policy work groups. So please do your homework and look through those in advance.
Just to clarification, Dr. De, these comes through a policy work groups?
Yes.
There are two board members in each of those policy work groups.
That's right.
So they are not just willy-nilly put by the staff members on the agenda.
Of course.
Two board members have allowed, including the superintendent, to come through.
We would never willy-nilly. Just want to clarify.
That's why it sounded like 30 out there.
I was just going to ask, when did you say they were going to go up?
The curriculum and instruction, we are meeting at the end of April, and then we will take them to the work session in May. Because we typically have them on the work session agendas. I looked and saw the number that we're already on the work session. Plus, we were not able to really get a meeting date together that suited everybody, so I just pushed it off until May.
Thank you. Mr. Ball.
It feels like, seems like, for too long, we've been spinning our wheels. And it feels good to feel a little bit of traction being made. So I'm proud of the work we're doing.
Mrs. Lowry.
I had the privilege of reading Dr. Seuss. I was doing that through the month of March, but also to Darrington, Sandusky, RS Payne, and Sheffield. And I'll read to you this week. In the bike presentation, RS Payne saw the drum corps perform, which was great, and Bass. I'll be attending Seussical on Thursday. And I'll be looking forward to going to the girls' tennis, because my husband used to teach tennis, and we all, as a family, played tennis. So I do like the tennis. But no, just thankful for all the classes that welcomed me in. And I really am enjoying just meeting the kids and, you know, all the different schools. And I've always loved working with children, so that was never a problem. But yeah, looking forward to all of it.
Thank you. Dr. Tinsley.
Yeah, I just think it's wonderful seeing everything that's going on in Lynchburg City School System. So often, we can focus on the negative, but when we look at the positive, the negatives pale in comparison. And when I look around at our teachers and our administrators, folks that are, I really think of an old quote from George Bernard Shaw. And this is a famous quote, as many of you may have heard it. He said, "You see things as they are and ask why. I dream things that never were and ask why not." And I think that's a beautiful quote, and I see that being played out in the Lynchburg City School Systems, system every day. And I just want to thank the teachers and administrators for all that you do. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Tinsley. Next one is the Ad Hoc Superintendent search. We'll move back to you. The staff is free to go, Dr. Copeland, after this, because we will go into a closed session. Go ahead, Dr. Tinsley.
Yeah, we just need to go into closed session so we can.
So the public who's watching, you want to give a little synopsis of what has happened so far?
Yeah, so right now, we have we have whittled down, as it were, the list of candidates down to six. Candidates, we did that as a joint meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee and the School Board. We went back to McPherson and Jacobson. They went back to each of those candidates, had them each do a vignette, a video, answering some very specific questions. And McPherson and Jacobson then went back as well and did background investigations, deep background investigations on each one of them. We were provided, we being the Ad Hoc Committee and the board, full board, were provided with reports and videos. We have since looked at those, viewed those videos, looked through the reports. And it is now time to go into closed session to decide on which of those candidates and how many we want to bring in for formal interviews.
And we decided to keep the Ad Hoc Search Committee along with us. That's the voice of the community.
Right. So the final vote on who becomes the next superintendent will be a board vote. However, as a voice from the community, we have kept the Ad Hoc Committee as part of the process so that they can voice their concerns, questions, and comments to the board who will be voting.
And we got, I know Mrs. Larkin is there, right?
And we may have some coming in on Zoom.
So, and we're doing it under the able leadership of our attorney towns, who will be guiding us to make sure that we stay legal.
Yeah, and just to be clear with the public, you know, just so that there's no perception of secrecy here. The reason that these meetings are being had in closed session, and I think most would appreciate this, is that these names are sensitive. In a couple of cases, we have folks that are serving in educational systems that don't necessarily want their current employer to know that they've applied to another school district. So we need to be sensitive to that. We have each signed a confidentiality agreement with McPherson and Jacobson on behest of the applicants. So we are under a legal obligation to keep these names private at this time. However, I will assure you that when the new superintendent is selected, you will know who that is.
Thank you.
Let's see, let me read the verbiage for the closed session. Thank you, Dr. Tinsley. Any questions for Dr. Tinsley? Notice of closed sessions. The School Board Chair recommends the School Board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by the Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, a personal matter involving discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for superintendent position. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. DePaul, Mr. Connor, Madam Clark, would you please call the role?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Julio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Let me stay here.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
She's asking for you.
Yes, I was asking, are we staying here or going upstairs?
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll stay here? That's what. Upstairs? Okay. Go upstairs. Thank you. We're upstairs. Thank you.